We probably want that off if we're gonna...
Um, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I live there.
There we go. Um, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission on March 4th, 2015. A printed agenda is available outside of the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Opens Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. If you parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, it is open parking today and you do not need a parking coupon. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, the commissioners and the staff, cellphone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting and we appreciate your cooperation with that. The Planning Commission action today is final on items 1.2 Special Permit Number 12006A and 1.3 County Special Permit Number 13033A. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council or County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the city clerk or county clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. The first item of business is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held February 18th, 2015. Is there a motion? Move approval? That was Kathy Beecham.
Second.
That was Michael Cornelius. Any discussion? Okay, Amy?
Beecham.
Yes.
Cornelius.
Yes.
Shear.
Epstein.
Cora.
Yes.
Sunderman.
Yes.
Ho.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero with Shear, Epstein.
The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Jerry to read all of the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Jerry, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Thank you. Item 1.1008 Administration Number 15002 to Annex Approximately 10.27 Acres More or Less, Including Adjacent Rights of Way. And Item 1.120 Change of Zone 05085 The Two Men, Tall Brook. Planed Unit Development by Spanning Boundary Approximately By Approximately 10.27 Acres More or Less for Change of Zone From AB Agriculture to R3 Residential PDB For A Planned Unit Development District Designation Upset Property And For An Amended Development Plan Which Proposes Modifications To The zoning Ordinance And Land subdivision Ordinance To Allow A Town House Development East Of Tallgrass Parkway Consisting Of Thirty-Six Dwelling Units On Property Generally Located At Tallgrass Parkway And Astor Brook. Item 1.2 Is Special Permit Number 12006A And Amendment To Renew Special Permit For The Excavation Of Soil And Property Generally Located East Of 4100 Noel 84th Street. And This Is Planning Commission Final Action Unless Appeal To The City Council. And Item 1.3 Is County Special Permit Number 1300 Or 13033A To Amend The Preserve At Cross Creek First Edition Community Unit Plan To Add Two Lots Transferred From The Gensity Approved In The Roca Extra Territorial Jurisdiction On Property Generally Located At South 64th Street And Roca Road. And This Item Is Also Final Action By The County Commission Unless Appeal To The County Board. Please Note That Item 1.4 Is Being Removed From The Consent Agenda And Will Be Called As Item 3.1 Under Public Hearing. Are There Any Explanatory Communications To Be Discussed By The Commission On Consent Agenda?
I see none.
Is There Anyone Here Wishing To Speak On Any Item On The Consent Agenda? If So, Please Stand And State That Item.
I don't quite understand now. Is that for 3.1 or what are you talking about?
Uh, no. Are you referring to Item 1.4?
Yes.
On the consent agenda? That will be called separately under the public hearing. As Item 3.1.
And you can get up and speak?
Yes, sir.
Please.
Anyone else wishing to speak on an item on the consent agenda other than Item 1.4, which will now be 3.1? All right. We will entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
That was Commissioner Hove with a second. Was that you, Dennis?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Amy?
Beecham? Yes.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Cora?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Ho?
Yes.
Plus?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Uh, this is final action on Special Permit Number 12006A And County Special Permit Number 13033A Unless Appeal To The City Council Or The County Board.
There are no requests for deferral on today's agenda. So, we will now proceed to the public hearings. The staff will make a brief presentation, then the applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony and then the applicant will have an opportunity for rebuttal. Each person testifying should state their name and address and will have five minutes to speak unless you request additional time and as that is granted. Uh, the timer will go off after four minutes, then you will have one minute to wrap up your testimony. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jerry, please call the first public hearing item.
Okay, Item 3.1 Is County Special Permit Number 15006 To Allow The Development Of Coyote Ridge Addition Community Unit Plan Consisting Of Nine Single Family Acres Lots Including A Request To Waste Homestead Building On Property Generally Located At Northwest Seventieth Street And West Rock Creek Road. Staff Recommendation Is Conditional For Approval.
Sarah. Good afternoon, Sarah Hartzell, Planning Department. Um, the request before you is for an AGCUP, Community Unit Plan, which would cluster the density from this property on the north end of the property where there's a bit of a rise, a bit of a knoll, and in nine lots. I'll show you the site plan here. This property is just south of the unincorporated village of Agnew. About half a mile south of that village, it lies next to Highway 79, which is the highway up to Valprezo in Butler County. The road on the, on the south is Rock Creek Road and to the west is Northwest Seventieth Street. You received a email from a citizen who was concerned about, primarily about access and roadway traffic. Neutral is how he's described his response, but he has, he does have some traffic concerns. We did look at the roadways and what the current traffic are, is on the roadways. Let me put this site up here, maybe move it up a bit. Agnew Road is the roadway that you would probably access this, this property from where you're coming from, um, the north and then down Seventieth into this property. The access to this property is approximately right here, just, just a couple hundred feet south of the half-mile line. Rock Creek does attach or does connect with Seventy-Ninth Street, so presumably from the south, a person could access this property from Rock Creek as well. Traffic counts on these roadways, the Agnew segment, which is about 600 feet from Highway 79 to Northwest Seventieth, um, has about 322 cars per day on the last traffic count, which was in 200, or 2011. And then, as you travel to the west, I think the, the letter pointed out that there are several other uses along that roadway, including Wildwood Lake is, this is one of the primary accesses to that. There's a monastery on the, on the north side between, um, I think that's Eighty-Fourth and, and Ninety-Eighth Street, Northwest Eighty-Fourth and Northwest Ninety-Eighth Street. Traffic counts do start to fall as you travel west. They are 211 trips per day on the next segment west, the next mile segment, and 127 on the mile segment after that. If you recall from some of our comprehensive plan discussions on paving of rural roadways, 300 trips per day is when they usually put a segment onto the list of possible paving projects, so they start to look at that for additional engineering, perhaps a change in grade to flatten out the crown. And, and then that gets moved into the list for possible paving. Now, that doesn't mean that it's going to get paved immediately. That just puts it on kind of the, um, the list of possible projects and they start watching that project. Northwest Seventieth Street, which runs along the west side here, has a count right now of 40 trips per day. Um, so it's fairly low, as is Rock Creek, which is about 63 trips per day and then 64 on the next, um, segment. There are a couple small acreage clusters out here. There's no AGR development, but there are some AGCUPs and then some scattered, um, probably farmstead splits or grandfathered lots. There are some scattered acreages in this area, but probably the, the heaviest segment is along Eighty-Fourth Street and that still only has a tri, uh, 49 trips per day. So, we're looking at fairly low, um, traffic trips. I believe that this letter said that, um, the individual had talked to the county engineer about the possibility of paving that 600-foot segment, um, from Highway 79 to Seventieth Street and that the engineer at that time, um, who was a different engineer, had agreed that that would be one of the projects put on the priority list. So, it may be that another, another call to our new engineer to, um, reiterate the need for that, that paving might be helpful. Um, with nine dwelling units, you would anticipate about 90 more trips per day along that road, which would push that little 600-foot segment up over 400 trips per day. Um, I believe there were some, some others who had some concerns about water in the area. We did have a, a fairly extensive well report from the applicant that our health department reviewed for both qual, quality and quantity. The well that they tested was pumping at 30 gallons per minute with air, which I believe means that they add air into the, the shaft in order to, um, get the readings on there. But, uh, that's still well over the minimum of 10 gallons per minute that they generally look for. So, looking at a fairly good well, they did, the health department did recommend that, um, moving forward with this before the, how, before the lots were actually sold, that there be test wells or a permanent well drilled on each lot, which is a, kind of a, a typical recommendation out in the county.
All right, do we have questions for Sarah?
Sarah, the revised, uh, site plan-
Yes, sir.
-has the Northwest 56th Road, so that, that's what's correct. Is that right? Cause there, the other one does not have that.
Right. Um, in this application, they are requesting a, a re, or a waiver to the block length for the length of this block along here. Originally, the application came in with a cul-de-sac that ended right here and no connections to the north or south. We did work with the applicant and the engineer to make sure that we got that connection to the north in case that farmland would, um, want to develop in the future, that they would have access to this and we'd have a single entryway here at about the half-mile point, as well as extending this cul-de-sac down to the south. And they agreed to that and provided this revised site plan.
So, they would then have access to that east-west road up the top there?
Right. Right.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions for Sarah?
I have one. Sarah, when I was reading this, and maybe I'm just, um, missing something here, but I noticed that for the density bonus, um, that right now, maybe it's just a little bit short for that and so they need to include just a little bit more.
Yes, they'll have to revise the site, size of the outlot. I think it was .7 or something like that acres, so they'll have to revise it slightly in, in order to get that density bonus. If that wasn't done, then they would be limited to seven units instead of the nine.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. We'll hear testimony from the applicant.
Uh, my name's Dan Rosenthal with the Reg Engineering Group, uh, 601 Old Chaney Road here in Lincoln and, uh, working on the project with Gene Benish, uh, who's the owner of the property. Uh, I guess Sarah did a good job explaining the project, so I guess maybe we'll just answer any questions if anybody has anything that they may have.
Any questions for the applicant? I guess we don't have any, so thank you.
Okay. I guess the one comment I may have is, uh, looking at the site plan, you know, we are over on acreages on lots, so it'd be really easy to obtain the required acreages for the site. So...
All right. Thank you. Do we have any testimony in support of this application? All right. Testimony and opposition of the application?
My name is Don Olson. My address is 318 County Road, 29 Valprezo. I have land at fifteen, the section 15125, which is a mile west of the area. And just Northwest Eighty-Fourth Street and Rock Creek Road, there's a cluster of houses. And I talked to these people earlier and I think there's only two wells in that corner that they have water and the other people have to go down about a quarter of a mile to the creek on the west side of their acreages to pump water up so they have sufficient water. And my understanding is that they can't build any more houses on that hundred and some acres that they have with the cluster because they can't get water in that area. And they said they dug one test well. Can I ask that question to someone?
I, I believe that was the testimony, sir.
One test well. And they're gonna put in nine houses and they don't even know if they have enough water in that area for nine houses just because they did one test well. Is that correct?
Well, we'll hear from the applicant on that. You can, hopefully he's keeping track of your questions and he can answer them when he comes up for rebuttal.
Okay. And then can I rebuttal his answers?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, there's other people in the audience here that's concerned too. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have other testimony and opposition?
Hi. I'm Charles Berry, um, fifth gener, fifth generation farmer in the area.
Can we have your address, please?
17800 Northwest Seventieth and I farm up to Rock Creek Road and Seventieth Street. This isn't a personal attack on Gene. I, I do stand opposed to this though, as I know many of my neighbors do for various For starters, this quarter section has already been sufficiently divided into, or effectively divided into three parcels. If we add nine, now we're, we're dividing a quarter section into 12 parcels. And it's not quite a quarter section to start with. It comes to maybe about 150 acres. If you average these, you're getting 12-acre parcels. There's no infrastructure in the area for that. I think that's been pointed out. Maybe there will be, maybe there won't be that, you know? And if there is, what, what's the cost to the people in the community? Uh, the second point I'd like to make is how much water would be required for this subdivision? Uh, it's, the, in the area, there's, there's a lack of water, which was pointed out. And it's common knowledge in the area, there's water about 100 feet deep that's good drinking water. If you want more water, you go down about 300 feet and you pull it out of the mud. If, if that water, which isn't good to drink, isn't good enough for you, you'll need to go down deeper and you'll drill into salt water. Um, I know this from experience and I know other people that have drilled wells in the area could tell you the same thing. One issue I have with the water is I have an irrigation well in the area and there are other irrigators in the area. We're self-regulating. I haven't used my irrigation well for years. I've talked to other irrigators in the area. They feel that they're self-regulating as well. We don't want any issues to come that are similar to the issues that are happening north of us. We just want to regulate our own water and have enough water for our neighbors. There's times when I have to run my irrigation well to water my cattle because my domestic well can't handle it. My mom says, "I know not to do laundry when you're watering your cattle." I only have a few head of cattle. I have about 34 head. I, I don't know if there's any proof that there is sufficient water there. And will I continue to not irrigate so someone else can have a financial benefit? I don't think so. I, I think that I can't put someone else's financial gain in front of my own. I think at that point, I would just start to irrigate again and, and we'll just have to see what the outcome is. In conjunction with the wells, is there any data to support nine septic systems in this proximity to nine wells? We know that a half a mile so north in Agnew, there's some wells contaminated by septic systems. This, this seems like a pretty good concentration. You know, and, and if in the future we need rural water, what will the cost be? Who's gonna pay for it? I, I don't want to find that out, especially the hard way. The fourth point, as was pointed out before, the roads aren't designed for this. These are small gravel roads for limited traffic and we have seen an increase in traffic with additions at Northwest Eighty-Fourth and Rock Creek Road. And I have experienced several situations where there are car accidents and damage has been done to my fields and fences and there's no recourse for that. They're just go unreported. It's, it's difficult to move equipment down these roads too with more traffic. The other point I'd like to make is it's become a main route on Northwest Seventieth for people that like to consume alcohol after work to travel back north from Lincoln. It, it's become dangerous. Fifth, property taxes. The trend is for their property taxes to increase with more development. I would propose not to extend this permit to help with this trend. You know, this would be a further cost to me and my neighbors. The sixth point I'd like to make is, um, all these people will need recreation to, uh, to recreation, which is one of the main reasons why they move out to our area. And this causes a lot of issues for me and my neighbors and they require service from the local fire department. Are they equipped to do so if there's a large fire in the area like we had last year close to the other development a mile west?
Sarah, we're gonna have to ask that you wrap up your testimony, Neil.
Okay. In conclusion, I'd like to, uh, consider the cost of the community and myself. Does it outweigh the financial gain of others? I'm not against progress or development, but are there more suitable locations in the county? And I hope for our economy and our children, we continue to grow where we're prepared already to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there more testimony in opposition of this application? All right. Oh, I think you have one of that.
I got one of that.
Oh, please come forward.
My name's Andy Berry. I'm Charles Berry's brother. Um, my parents live about a mile and a half from this development.
Could you give us your address too, Andy?
Sure. My address is 2906 Summit Boulevard in Lincoln. I own 80 acres of farmland that's about three-quarters of a mile from the proposed development. And I just wanted to speak, you know, really briefly about some of the water issues that are proposed by this development. Seems to me that the standard that the planning commission is following is to look at what water might be available to the people who are, who may be living in the development. But, given what's happening with water in this part of the county, I think it's important for the commission to look at the effect of a development like this on the access to water to other users who are already in the area. And I just don't think there's evidence to show that this isn't gonna have a detrimental effect on others and that's something that the, that the developer ought to show. The, that's the essential point that I want to make to the, to the commission today.
Thank you, Mr. Berry.
Thank you.
I had a question. What, what experience is there in that area for?
So, available water. So, my parents have had to drop their well significantly in the last couple of years. My brother might be able to give you the exact number of feet. I think it's been at least 50 feet that, that they've had to lower it successive times. There's another development that was put in about, it's about two miles from, from this development a few years ago. I don't know if that's contributing to this or not. I don't think there's been any studies of what's going on under the ground with the groundwater. But I know that they've had problems in that development, that the people who live in that development have had trouble over time getting decent water to use in their homes. And there, there are other, other people in this neighborhood who are having a harder and harder time getting the water that they need to, to just live, let alone agricultural uses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks.
My name is Larry Bush and I live at 20655 Northwest Seventieth. And I do own the property just to the west of the existing, um, area that they want to build. And we built the house seven years ago and, uh, the well driller, um, um, we were into that 85-foot deep well. There was only 10-foot of gravel and less than that with water. And yes, we did a test and we stopped pumping at 22 gallons a minute, okay? But he has told, the well told me that, he goes, "Okay, you have a family?" We have a family of six. And he says, "This will never support livestock, okay? Don't manicure your lawn." And at this point, we haven't had an issue with amount of water, but we use it conservatively, knowing what it's like to not have water. And, and so, um, that's, that's my main concern is I don't know if there can be any more tests that can be done on how much water is there. And the quality of water is, is, you know, it's very hard, you know? It's, it's just like any other water, but it, uh, the, the main concern is, you know, seven years ago we built and just because there's a development with nine houses to the east of me, it affects my livelihood and the fact that I can't even raise my own family in the area of just water, not being even greedy, just water to sustain daily life. Thank you.
Sarah, any other testimony in opposition?
John Oshmara, uh, 20401 Northwest Seventieth. And, um, my house is about 150 yards from where the property would be developed. Uh, we've been out there about nine years, um, and before we actually bought our property, um, we have 30 acres. We did, um, I want to say somewhere in the area of six test wells before we actually found water, um, or actually found a hole that would produce water. I have talked to the health department, um, cause I know that that's where some of the water information has come from, expressed my concerns with him, um, regarding what, what our nine properties gonna do, uh, as far to the water table. His response was really just that I needed to bring my concerns here. Um, I guess, and, and then, uh, reiterate some of the other points, the fact that, um, we do not, we do not water our lawn. We do not, uh, we are very cautious with our water consumption in the area just because of the, uh, small amount of water would appear we have. Uh, I know the gentleman across the section, they had, uh, they had put in sprinklers and, um, their well was unable to keep up. They actually, uh, had to disable using their sprinklers because their well could not, uh, keep up with their underground sprinklers. So, uh, there's definitely can, some concern for, uh, water in the area. I, and I realize they've done, um, one well and it's supposedly, uh, was successful, but, um, I guess before we commit to putting in eight more, I'd sure like to have a little more information on the, on how it's gonna affect the groundwater in the area. Uh, some other concerns I have, just since it's in such close proximity and talking to the, to the farmers right across the road, since these properties are backed right up to their property line, uh, concern about, uh, just is there gonna be issues with, I mean, cause these guys are farming till all hours of the night and hydras. I know they spread manure on this, uh, on this farm, uh, this last year, are, are we gonna- Are we gonna run into issues with people complaining about the environment once they're out there? And is that all under agreement? Before somebody moves to an area like this, that these are the circumstances you will be subjected to? And get ready for it, I guess, is my, the point that I would make. Because last thing I want is somebody coming over complaining to me at all hours of the night because my tractor's outside running or something. So, I definitely have some concerns about that. Because it is a, you know, agricultural community and it's probably gonna stay that way. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other testimony in opposition?
Hi, my name is Lance Rose, and my address is eight-three-five-four West Rock Creek Road. It's at the intersection of Eighty-Fourth and Rock Creek, which is exactly one mile west of the proposed division that we're talking about. I bought my property, or my house, it's ten acres approximately eighteen months to two years ago. We had the well tested at that time and it was marginal at that point. And the well, I believe, was put in in the mid-seventies or so. Much prior to the subdivision, that's approximately another fifty or a hundred yards to our west. So I don't know if that subdivision has subsequently affected the well that we have at our house. So obviously, the water concerns are, do concern me as well. I would urge you before that you approve this, that you have more substantive testing of the well. And then also try to, or the test well that they have already dug, but then also try to determine what the size of the residences are gonna be there? How many occupants are we talking and what kind of water usage are we talking about on a monthly and a weekly basis? In addition to, you know, what kind of drought forecast do we have in the future? My second point that I'd like to make is, is I drive on Rock Creek Road every day, multiple times a day. In and out of Lincoln, I do work here in Lincoln. I would venture a guess, I would assume that most of the occupancies of these, of this division would probably work in Lincoln, just based on the more jobs are there. And I would say that most of the occupants are probably going to exit seventy and then left on Rock Creek and then south on seventy-nine. I will tell you that Rock Creek is probably not set up for that, for an increase in traffic. And I'll tell you specifically that the railroad crossing there is particularly dangerous, there's no signal or arms. And it's pretty rough too. So, also before we move forward with this development, I would encourage you to look specifically at that railroad crossing. Thank you.
Any other testimony in opposition? All right, we'll hear from Sarah. Any questions?
Yes, walk us through again what the requirements for the water wells in this area and what testing has been done. Okay.
Typically, what we do is we look at the area in general. If it's an area that the health department has identified as questionable on quantity and quality of water, then we'll obtain well information from existing wells. And that well information is analyzed by the health department. If they do not have sufficient evidence from that well information, then they can require additional test wells be drilled. And additional information be sent in. In this particular, and you know, we go from there. And usually they'll identify how many test wells on what kind of a grid should be drilled in order to provide that information. In this particular case, the well information that was brought forward with the application was found to be sufficient to make their judgment.
And that was based on nine, the nine lots or the nine?
With this site plan, yeah, the location of the nine lots and the location of the wells. They take that into account and they take it into account how deep the well is, what the static water level is, what the pumping water level is and what the pump rate is. And then they of course look at several different chemical components of the groundwater to judge the quality of the water.
Sarah, do they look at the impact on properties around and the use, like if there are agricultural properties around? Is that part of the formula that they're considering?
I can't speak to that, I'm not really sure what they do with the additional properties around. I know that there has been discussion about the link between agricultural wells and residential wells and whether those two can affect one another. There's so much variation in the types of soils in the county. You can get water in one place and go a hundred yards and not be able to find water at all. So it really varies widely across the county. It also varies widely on the recharge rate in different soils. So some soils will recharge quickly and the well will come back up to a level after it's been pumped quickly. And others take a longer time. They talk about a cone of influence, which is the area around the well that is actually affected by that well and how steep that cone is. So when I pump my well, I'm drawing water from the soils around my well. If the soils are very tight, that cone can be very steep. So I'm only influencing the waters around me. If the water, or the soils are looser, more gravel, more sand, that sort of thing, then my cone broadens out. So there's so many different factors that go into that analysis.
I assume we don't have anybody from the health department here today?
I don't believe so.
So are you saying that as part of the analysis, the health department has determined that the cone of influence in this particular area is not gonna affect the neighbor's water table?
That would be one of the factors that they would consider, yeah, in their recommendation.
And do they consider the size of the home and the number of people in the house?
That I don't know. I know there was one question about the septic systems. The septic, the soils in this area are judged to be appropriate for either lagoon or your traditional septic system. I know Agnew has had problems, however, the lots in Agnew are suburban-sized lots where they have a septic system and a well on the same lot in some cases. Now, in some cases, they've had to buy adjacent property to put their septic system on. So whenever you have a septic and a well, they're very close together, there's a high chance of contamination of the well. In this case, we've got three and a half to five acre lots. So there's plenty of room to make those adjustments and make sure that separation between those two uses.
And that's the location to the north of the?
Half mile to the north, right.
Okay, and one of the conditions of approval is that before occupying a dwelling unit, the city county health department has to approve the water and wastewater systems?
And that's really a condition of any house being built in the county? Whether it would be part of this development or any other house, their well and septic have to be approved by the county.
Does the approval process then go through the kind of same analysis that we're talking about? The effect that they're gonna have on neighbors' water table?
I can't answer that, I'm sorry. I think it's more the construction and the health aspects of it.
Could they require more testing or more well drilling at that point?
I mean, the health department is the one that determines how much testing there was for this. I don't think that they would require additional testing after the approval of the CUP and as part of the building permit.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we don't know, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was gonna say, unfortunately, we don't know exactly what testing they did because we don't have a water report. We, I wish they were here, I'd love to ask a few more questions.
We have a water report and we have a recommendation from the county health. Now, they didn't supply me with their process of analysis and what their thought process was, their analysis process was.
I guess, just having heard so much testimony, I would be curious to ask them if, you know, they had, I believe you mentioned they could require extra testing based on the other wells in the area, but we don't know if that happened, right?
Well, if they would have wanted additional information, then yes, they would have communicated that with us and we would have communicated to the applicant, right.
But we don't know what they looked at initially to determine that they didn't, you know, what they know about the water table in the area and the cone of influence and that kind of thing.
I mean, they would have looked at the well report that was given to them by the applicant and they would have looked at their records of what they have for the area.
Okay, and do we know anything about how detailed the mapping of the area is and the water table in the area?
I don't know anything about that.
And the influence on different property owners?
I don't know anything about that, no.
So just one other follow-up question. So, so the health department had the test well results. Do we know, or can we assume that they also looked at existing well information? Because they would have some of that.
I would assume that they would have used whatever data they have available, yes.
Okay, okay.
One more question, if I may. Do you know when they're looking at this and saying there's enough water for use? Somebody had mentioned lawns and sprinklers. Do we know if it's, when someone said, when they're saying, yes, there's enough water for use, is that suburban use with sprinklers and everything, do we, do we know?
Yeah, I think typically when they say that there's enough for domestic use, they're talking about the, you know, how much do you need to flush toilets and take showers and wash dishes and cook and that sort of thing. They're looking at what do you need to actually be able to carry on your daily activities. They're not saying that this is enough to run a sprinkler system, fill a swimming pool, all of those extra things that people might want to do.
And do you know if they take into account the uses that the neighbors are putting the property to? Because I know that domestic uses are given priority over irrigation uses. So are they considering the fact of people having irrigation wells in the area when they're making a determination that this is sufficient for domestic water use?
I would assume that if they have data on surrounding wells, that they would have used that. I don't know for certain that they did that in this case, but I mean, I would assume that they use whatever data they have available.
Can I change the subject slightly? Can you, as long as you're walking us through things, walk us through the right to farm laws a little bit?
Well, Nebraska is a right to farm state, this is an agricultural area. Farming is not considered to be a nuisance. So, animal smells, manure being spread, that sort of thing, that's not considered to be a nuisance that an acreage person could then, not that complaints aren't made, I'm sure, certain that complaints are made. But there's no prosecution of any of those complaints.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Sarah? All right, applicant?
Again, Dan Rosenthal with the Reiki Engineering Group here in Lincoln at six oh one Old Chaney Road. I kind of kept track of some of the questions, so I'll, excuse me, if I bounce around here a little bit. We do do design of septic systems and stuff like that. And so you can range from, you know, two hundred gallons a day to a thousand gallons a day, depending on bedroom size. So if we have a house that's just pushing up to a thousand gallons per day, you know, a typical irrigation well would probably use seven fifty to a thousand gallons a minute. Just to kind of give you an idea on the perspective of what we're looking at, a small volume of water per day versus almost, you know, maybe even twelve hundred gallons per minute. I believe in this area, we're talking about ten gallons per minute minimum to pump. And I believe, I remember, sir, did you say that the county was asking as part of the contingency of the project to do these additional wells?
They were, they were asking, or they were suggesting that it would be good policy to have the wells on the lots before they're sold.
All right. So does that answer your questions? One other thing I want to talk about the wells is the county, I assume, you can go to the state website and look at all the wells and every registered well in the state. And so they would probably pick an area, maybe a thousand feet by a thousand feet or whatever, and start looking at all those wells. When you look at those wells, you also pick up all the well data. So when the well driller drills, they have to enter all this data. And that includes gallons per minute where the screens are set, where water tables set. So that would tell them a lot if there's a twenty-foot screen or a thirty-foot screen and where the water table's at in relation to that water table. And, you know, somebody's older well, nineteen seventies well, you know, the screens are probably about rusted through or plugged. So those things have a lot of variables as far as gallons per minute with longevity of wells. Does that kind of answer any questions on wells or?
I have a few more. What data did you have to gather to submit to the health department?
Well, due to permit, you know, we go through Lancaster County permit process. And one thing that we had to submit is a test well data, which we did as part of our application. And then the health department takes that data, reviews it, see if it's consistent with the area and the other well data. They came back and said it looks like it's a good well and a good area to put these houses in.
So other than the test well data, did you submit any data to the health department?
No, Sarah, actually, we just, yeah, we just give everything to Sarah, then Sarah sends it out to the health department, everybody.
Is one test well customary for this size of a development?
I mean, it's not a huge development, we're nine acres, about thirty-six acres or so.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four acres. So I mean, it's just a representation of the area. You know, knowing down the road that we'll have to get the other well data as far as the health department before they'll give like a building permit, make sure that, you know, all the water samples are okay.
So you anticipate other test wells?
Well, what we do is get the data and they're gonna want to test that before, you know, either somebody buys a lot or they commit to the lot. Just like the gentleman who drilled ten wells, I assume they want to make sure that they did it before the purchase and not after the purchase.
In other words, you're not gonna build a house and then dig the well and find out there's no water?
Certainly hope you wouldn't do that. And perhaps these lots, I'm just speculating, perhaps the subdivision to the east, maybe that was more reactive, maybe that was a climate where people buy a lot of acreages. Maybe weren't a lot of acreages to be had, so perhaps they bought one, did do their due diligence and that's a factor that may have happened. As far as, there were some bad wells out there. In my previous life, I want to talk about railroad crossing, in my previous life, I used to work for Department of Roads. And at that time, I was the railroad engineer for the state of Nebraska. So I was in charge of all the crossings in the entire state. So, if I remember right, we had from like zero to like fifteen hundred vehicles a day, you could just have crossbucks. As we started getting up more into like three thousand, then you'd do what's called a diagnostic review of that crossing. Then you'd look at putting gates or lights or whatever. So, you know, one thing we can certainly do is we could make sure that we work with the Department of Roads and Union Pacific Railroad that, you know, at the time this is done, that we would have them go out and do what we call a diagnostic review of the site. Make sure the trees are trimmed back and there's a good sight distance so that as traffic increases that, I mean, it may sound like it needs to be done already, but make sure that that's being taken care of. You know, fire department, again, in my previous life, I worked for a volunteer fire department. And we always loved new development, new taxes. It helped us buy better equipment and keep up with our techniques and stuff like that. So I would assume a rural fire department, you know, they're built for these things, that's what they do. Property taxes, that's probably more of a conversation with the county department or something. Traffic, it sounds like we're gonna be impacting the roads minimal. See, septic system, we talked a little bit about that, but the area has to be a minimum of three acres. And by that three acres, you get your septic system and your well. So they have to be so far from the property lines and so that we meet all those distances. And again, those would have to meet, you have to fill out a permit, get a permit, then you turn in your septic system. The roads are gonna be built to county standards. And then I believe, is it eighty percent, Sarah, or seventy-five percent of built out could be transferred over to the county?
And a minimum of six occupied units.
Okay, so six units. Guess that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions or Gene may have some things to add? I miss something?
I also live out in the area. And I guess I wasn't aware of any water problems at all. I mean, right within a half mile, there's an irrigation well that pumps, I don't, big, large amounts. And there's another one south of that, there's a lot of residents around there, they have pools, they do water their lawns. I water my lawn. My well is only fifty foot deep. I wasn't aware of any problems with the water out there. But, and my well driller was Mozer Well and I asked him, is it a good well? And he says, it's very good for the area. And, you know, there might be a couple areas down there that are probably in an area that doesn't have water. But, you know, is that my problem? I, I don't know. But I guess I wasn't aware of a water issue.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
I have one more question for Sarah.
Okay.
Well, then we should have the applicant up again, depending on whether or not a...
What?
We should plan on having the applicant back if rebuttal is required.
Sarah, can you just walk us through, Janelle had mentioned kind of the prioritization of when we're in these areas where we have agriculture and then we're having some development, what's the, kind of, who gets priority on the water? And, you know, is it, I know that's probably a hard question to answer, but can you...
Ask the state water law.
Let's quiz your abilities here.
Yeah, I am not familiar with that. I know that Ron mentioned the irrigation wells pump at, you know, pump a full day's worth of water in a matter of minutes. I know that in just the conversations that I've had with the NRD, for instance, that they have no instances in their records of a rural, or sorry, residential well affecting an irrigation well. Now, an irrigation well could potentially affect residential wells, but, you know, as far as nine residences pumping, maybe up to 9,000 gallons of water in a day, if, you know, if they're all pumping full during the day, that's a matter of less than 10 minutes of pumping on an irrigation well. So it's probably not going to have a huge impact on that irrigation well.
All right.
It's definitely, I mean, water is not something to shrug off. It's definitely an issue in that northern part of the county, highly variable. You can drill in one spot and get great water and go just a few, you know, just a short distance away and have difficulty. The soils, the rock formations, the salinity are all very, very widely up in that part of this county. That's why we look for the test wells.
And remind me, Sarah, this is our action today, it's not final action, it still has to go to the county board.
Right, since there's a waiver to the block length on this one, it will go to the county board, yes.
Did that trigger any rebuttal that the applicant would like to make? All right. We'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
Move for a two-week deferral, and I'll talk about why after we vote.
I'll second.
Okay, that was Michael Cornelius and Kathy Beecham seconding.
I guess we can discuss it before the vote. Sorry, my mistake. After the second, I apologize. I'll tell you why I want to have a deferral. We've had a number of neighbors here, and whether or not the Health Department has found that water is problematic in this area, we know that the neighbors feel that it is. They have experience suggesting that it is. And whether or not that experience is localized or not, we haven't been able to answer that question very adequately because we've heard a little bit about what the process is, but I, if I were a neighbor, I wouldn't feel like my concerns had been addressed exactly. So what I would like to do is come back in two weeks and talk about this again and give the Health Department the opportunity to have a representative here to walk us through the approval process and talk somewhat authoritatively about it rather than saying, well, I think what they do is this, and I imagine the data they have is that. And then maybe we can see, we'll hear that the cone of influence is very narrow, and it's not going to be a problem, and I can feel very comfortable voting for this application.
I'm going to support Michael's application for the two-week deferral. I don't disagree that this is a good, probably a good development for the area, but I just don't feel comfortable enough with knowing of what process the Health Department goes through at this point in time to determine whether these wells will have an influence on the neighbors or not. Now, in two weeks, if the Health Department makes us a presentation, I'd like to hear the analysis they go through because, you know, there are many areas in the state where the water is highly hydrologically connected, and I would hate for us to make a decision without having the full knowledge about what analysis was done to see if this particular development could affect the neighbors who already have existing wells. Any other discussion? I think we need to vote on the motion for deferral. Amy?
Beecham, yes.
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Far?
Yes.
Yes.
Both?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item under public rights, item 4.1, comprehensive plan, informant number 15001, to review as performance with the 2014 Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan Amendment to the Van Dorn Redevelopment Plan to add to Robert's Cave project. Proposed project to complete construction of a 9,000 square foot building and restoration and rebuilding the Robert's Cave. Closed project area includes approximately 1.5 acres, generally located at 3235 South 10th Street. The Van Dorn redevelopment plan area is generally located from Hill Street to Des Moines Square in Fall Harbor, between South 7th and South 10th Streets, located in the state of Nebraska. Staff recommendation is applying EPO performance with the comprehensive plan. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on this application?
I see none.
Members of the planning commission, David Landis, Urban Development Department Director, the applicant in this case, we need to amend the existing Van Dorn redevelopment plan in the event we succeed at arriving with an understanding with the Blue Blood Brewery that would like to use the Robert's Cave area for a tax increment financing project to assist that development. So we have to put into the existing plan a description that that kind of project would fit with the existing plan. In fact, we haven't done much work in the Van Dorn redevelopment plan. We've had a couple of projects that we were trying to make happen, they didn't. So this is an area that you haven't seen much before. This is the location of the project area. It's just here, is there a button that I, oh, okay.
It just takes a second.
This is the 1.5 acres of the Van Dorn redevelopment area that we're specifically talking about. It doesn't have old structures on it, it's got scrub vegetation and a sealed cave. This is what the land looks like now. The area generally has some old and dilapidated buildings, this one doesn't, but it does, as you can see, have land that's been in the city for a rather long time and undeveloped. There's a couple of reasons for that. The elevations are problematical, the infrastructure in the area is not great, and so this is a forgotten area of town but which occupied, at least for some of us growing up in Lincoln, a very real part of our childhood background with small little flashlights that we took down and explored Robert's Cave on a Saturday morning. Since 2000...
Vandalism, were you? You weren't one of the vandals, were you?
I was not a vandal, thank you very much. And I did not carve my name in the sand zone, but I can tell you literally hundreds of kids did. I did not. It was sealed in 2000 because of the vandalism that's there. And the city's interest in this case, it's, we wish breweries well, that's great, we love restaurants, that's great, but it is in fact the cave itself that holds a rather good deal of interest for us. It is a part of our historic background, it goes back to the 1860s, it was used as brewery storage originally. There is a portion of the plan that says, "The community's distinctive character and desirable quality of life for current residents and for future generations should be supported by exercising stewardship of historic resources throughout the county while maximizing benefits of past investments in public infrastructure and private property." The plan encourages the continued use and maintenance of historic resources, including properties not formally designated as landmarks, and that's what this is. It is historic. If you grew up in this town, you know it's historic. In fact, there are wonderful, apocryphal stories of Jesse James using this cave. It's not true from what we know, but it has a long historic background in support of exactly the use that would be put in this case. The project eventually, in its current form of design, looks something like this. It's not very visible from the road, in fact, it's over the crest of a hill down towards the elevators that are down in that location, but it would be, we think, a handsome addition to the city to return to available public use, a historic resource. It is not the case that we expect daily tours open to the public, but in conversations with the developer, what we said is, we would like to have access to the public in some form, whether those are special invited parties that you could use, whatever it is, but it's, we're not, we're not trying to help out a storage bin, we're trying to help out the, a limited public use of a historic resource in the context of a valuable economic development in the area. And also, as you can see, cutting down some scrub trees and, I think you would say, blighted land and having this project. Are there questions that I can answer for you?
Sure, it was mentioned in the minutes at the urban design, well, committee that this was kind of on a fast track. What is the reason that it's moving so quickly?
You know, we should probably change the name to the Fast Track, in that everything that we seem to be getting these days is on the fast track. I can't remember the last time I brought you a project in which you said, oh, don't worry, we have a very relaxed developer who's getting a suntan at the moment and will be back in a couple of months and pick up this project. We don't. What we see are people that are striking at relatively low interest rates, who have available cash and who want to build. They want to build in a building season in which they don't have to fight a winter, they can complete the project in a certain timeline. And they ask us for quick turnaround, they ask it in building and safety, they ask it in public works, they ask it in urban development, they ask it in purchasing, they ask it whenever it can occur, and this would be an example of that. But in almost all cases, it's because the developer is of the belief that they can catch the building season at the right time more than anything else.
Okay.
Dave, what's the access? How do you get into that area without...
Well, there's two roads. One is Robert's Cave Road. And then there is a private drive to the side. Let me see if I can show you where they are. Let's go back to that picture that we were looking at. By the way, there is to be about a 40-stall parking lot on the location. This is a roadway.
There you go.
Okay.
This is Robert's Cave Road. There is, however, a private drive that comes up this way. Here's Van Dorn Park, okay? So if you were going to come to the park, you'd go this way into the park, but you'd come down a little further, turn up this way, and it would get you there as well. But this is not a public street, this is.
Okay. There was something about private access on that road for 25 years, it's just coming up? Did I read that correctly?
It's expiring.
Expiring? Is part of this amendment that they have permanent access to that?
Our interaction with the developers for their purpose of the use of the tax increment financing, and none of the tax increment financing is used for that purpose. If they are making that claim, and I believe the developer's lawyer is here, and they could answer that question for you, I cannot because it's not been part of our conversations with them about the project.
Any other questions for Mr. Landis? Thank you. Do we have any additional testimony in support of this application?
Hi, my name is Brian Podwinski, and I'm with Blue Blood Brewing Company. I live 9322 South 28th Street here in Lincoln. The property we're looking at that provides a unique opportunity in Lincoln, actually a one-of-a-kind opportunity. The original use being for a brewery really spiked our attention with this project, and we really wanted to grow our business more, including the restaurant taproom side. The retail outlet part of it for a brewery can be quite large, and we've been lacking that at our current location. The other side of it is, is as a Lincoln native, there's all kinds of history besides, along with Robert's Cave, and we wanted to make sure we brought that back. We want people to go in, enjoy it as it is, it's beautiful down there. We went down about a month ago, and it's full of carvings, a lot of history, dates back to the 1800s on the walls, whether those are accurate or not, it's hard to say. But there's a lot of unique history down there I think we can play off of and make sure people can enjoy it, like some of the kids do when they were sneaking in here recently. So we're really excited about this project. As for access, a comment on the north-south road that the easement's coming up, the original developer, from our understanding, is working on a permanent easement on that road. And they're also working on a business, a business association or so for that, so we would maintain that north-south access. Okay?
Do you even have any pictures of the cave with you?
I have some on my phone, but we're posting more online all the time. We can sure bring those and share those at some point.
Any other questions? All right.
Okay, thank you.
Is there additional testimony in support of this application?
Afternoon. Dave Johnson with 951 Architects, 800 P Street. I'll be very brief, I'll just give you a little oversight of how we're going to handle the site and... Ninth Street is over here, High Street's this way, so this is that road we just had the question on the easement on, this is Robert's Cave Road. We're placing the building here, the site slopes from this east edge down to the west edge, almost 20 feet. So there's a big slope, and then it even slopes further to the grain elevators. So we're planning on a building that, as you look at it from this direction, will appear to be a one-story building, but as you drive around the back of it, it'll be a sort of a walkout type of a building. The hatched area of the building will be the brew house with the large vessels and tanks and brewing equipment. This area over here, that'll be look over, the area that's above Robert's Cave, obviously you won't see any of the cave when you're looking out over this, you'll just see a landscaped area. This will be his tap room, which will have his bar and his kitchen and seating and such. And below that will be further use as a part of his brew house. This box right here is the entrance to the cave, and we are planning on, from this lower level, accessing the cave that way for any uses that Brian may have for the cave and/or any public access to the cave. An image that, I guess I'm kind of big here, but this partial image is of the front door. So this is just right in the elbow of the bend of the building here, so this will be the entrance to the facility. It'll appear to be one-story from the front side, which I think, as Dave mentioned, you really won't see this building from Ninth Street, you'll see a bit of the roof. We are planning on a silo that's indicative of a grain silo because I believe it'll actually be used as, for grain that will be augured down into his brewery with a sign up fairly high for some visibility from Ninth Street. Here to answer any other questions?
Questions? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have testimony in opposition to this application? All right, do we have any further questions for staff? All right, then I assume we don't need rebuttal, so we'll go ahead and entertain a motion. Move approval. That was Ms. Beecham.
Second.
Michael?
I think this looks like a really interesting project. This is a really tricky piece of property with the grain silos right there, it's hard to find a business that's going to fit in there well, and I think this is really neat.
I think this is an appropriate use of TIF because I don't think this site would develop. I mean, it's sat empty for a long time, so I think this is going to be a good TIF project and exciting.
All right, well, we will call the motion. Amy?
Beecham?
Yes.
Cordean?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Far?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Both?
Yes.
Left?
Yes.
Both?
Yes.
Left?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. This is a recommendation to the City Council. Item 4.2, the comprehensive plan, informant number 15002, to review as performance with the comprehensive plan, proposed amendment to the redevelopment plan to add to South Cave Market redevelopment project area, generally located from South 7th Street to South 9th Street, N Street to A Street, and approximately 2.5 acres lying southwest from the intersection of South 7th Street and N Street, and including all adjacent right of way. The project proposes to increase the availability of park and off-site parking in relation to improvements by improving the street configuration and identifying existing public spaces that could be influenced by setting good parking. The Linkin Center redevelopment plan area is generally grounded by South Creek Interstate 180 and R Street on the north, 17th Street on the east, P Street on the south, and South Creek, Second Street and Sun Valley Boulevard on the west, in Lancaster, Nebraska. Staff recommendation is applying EPO performance with the comprehensive plan. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on this application? generally located from South Covington Street to South 9th Street and through 2A Street in approximately 2.5 acres lying southwest from the intersection of South 7th Street and N Street and including all adjacent right-of-way. The project proposes to increase the availability of park and off-site parking in relation to improvements by improving the street configuration and identifying existing public spaces that could be in complete use setting of parking. The Lincoln Center redevelopment plan area is generally bounded by South Creek Interstate, 180 and R Street on the north, 17th Street on the east, G Street on the south, and South Creek 2nd Street and Sun Valley Boulevard on the west in Lincoln, South and North. That recommendation is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Are there any important communications to be exposed on this application?
I see none.
Members of the Planning Commission, David Landis, Urban Development Director, the applicant in this case. The boundaries of what we're talking about are here. And we call this the South Haymarket Redevelopment Project. It is an amendment to the downtown redevelopment area. And we describe this area in particular because we think this is the place in which coming South Haymarket development is likely to be. And as that occurs, we will have an increase in the demand for parking. And we want to prepare for that as best we can. So, in fact, if you wanted to take a look at this area and sense how much land the city owns and controls, the blue is the public land. This is an area that doesn't have parking meters. It has some, it has grown up with the use of some private uses in which they feel, I think, a certain sense of ownership of the public right-of-way because of their past histories. It is an area that is going to be in transition, and a significant resource will be the need and availability of parking. We have a specific developer who wants to do a project in the area, and it's located at this location. We call that the Collegiate Housing Subproject as part of this motion. They're not asking for assistance for their building at all. What they are saying is they would, our discussions with them are twofold. First, they do want to have parking rights, as developments oftentimes do, in a parking system of the city. So that's what they would like. But they also say this. "We will be creating resources, and we would like those resources to be directed at parking in the South Haymarket, for us and for others, meaning on the street where our customers can use them and other customers can use them." When we say that there's a parking opportunity here, it's because the city, in some of this blue land I was showing you, owns land like this. Well, that's, that's okay today. It's, it's a bit of a mess. But it's, it's storage, there's some stuff that we need down there. However, if you cleared that off, you could put parking stalls there. We have streets like this where we have parallel parking. Parallel parking is fine, but it doesn't have nearly the carrying capacity of angled parking. Angled parking, however, requires moving curbs and changing sidewalks. Harmonizing angled parking with sidewalks, green space, landscape is expensive. And there are no city resources to do that now. However, with this general movement, we will create a series of resources that will allow us to contemplate the greater efficiency of public space if we're able to make these kinds of moves on the curbs that will give us greater carrying capacity for what is, as our plan currently seems to indicate, an area that we want to be densely residential. In a dense residential area, you want all the parking camp. And in this area, we do not ask developers to provide their own site parking. It's B4. In the B4 area, the city says, "Well, we'll take care of that, and you don't have to provide parking." Now, in suburban areas, they have to provide them. That's why you see those parking lots in front of their areas unlocked. They've got that obligation. They don't here. So we have this compounding public demand with limited resources for an infrastructure need that is absolutely essential if you're going to have the plan move in the direction that it is, which is dense, mixed-use and residential area. Some of the things that we could do here?
Dave, could you zoom in a little bit on that?
On this one?
No, the one you have on right now.
Okay.
Thanks.
And I think that's...
Sorry. Didn't mean to trip you up.
Where it says Zoom. You know, I was about to, I could have read that.
That's correct. Thank you.
Okay. But there are some opportunities for surface parking lots in this area. There's opportunities to expand our use under the Rosa Parks High application. So there are opportunities for which we do not now have resources to make them happen. This first sets out a plan to do that. And it says in the Phase 1 that the, that we're seeking to get resources from that project so that we can do this. There are other opportunities here. One of them is the K Street Power Plant. It's been talked about for a long time. But if the South Haymarket's going to generally move that way, it's the kind of thing that we're going to one day want to be able to take care of. Midwest Steel will tell you, "We could be better located for our business than where we are." It's not that we dislike where we are, but we truck almost all of our business, being closer to the interstate. And with about 90% of our business in Colorado, there are better locations for us. And if we can find a good buyer and a good location, we would contemplate that. So when that happens, that takes another area that would put into play this kind of land. The planning department's already done their work. You've, you've been briefed on the plan that is not completed, but it, it is pointed in the same direction. This is not inconsistent with that. We'd ask for the adoption of this amendment to the downtown plan and the creation of the South Haymarket Redevelopment Project.
Any questions for Mr. Landis? Dennis?
Just, just one, Dave. It's hard to tell in the existing condition of the streets down there how wide they are and how wide the public right-of-ways are. So when you talk about adding parking, diagonal parking, to the existing street infrastructure, the, can we assume, or do you know, are the, are the public right-of-ways, the, the street, street which really don't matter because they're, they're variable down there? Or they don't exist? I mean, it's just, they just flow. But are the public right-of-ways wide enough that, that we know that we can add the kind of parking assets that you're talking about? Diagonal parking, and there's enough width and?
I can't give you a uniform answer for all of it. I can give you an answer that there are places that we've seen that there is space. We can do that. And let me give you an example. 8th Street would be a place where we could do that.
Okay.
But the streets vary. This has been, not by any means a forgotten corner, but because it's been in industrial use, it isn't part that the public sees generally. And we don't bump into this, this set of streets commonly. And now, there are some that are sort of dead ends. And they don't look like downtown streets by any means. They've been serviceable. They've used the, they've served the needs that are down there, but they do vary. What we do know is that there are existing opportunities. I did bring the, the city's Parking Services Director, Wayne Mixdorf, here. And if you'd like to ask him some questions about parking lot, you could. We do know, for example, that conservatively, and I think very conservatively, we could do a surface parking lot in this area with 400 to 500 stalls.
Mm-hmm.
Now, it probably wouldn't be the permanent location for a couple of reasons. There is, it is a chance to use that and to make a connection with M Street that, that's implicated by that property. On the other hand, this is an area that already has an RFP for an entire block of the West Haymarket, south of the Harris Overpass, not north, where we've all been, but south of the Harris Overpass. If we do the Liner Building, if we do the Block 4, and if we do the Trinitas Project, we're going to have parking needs here. The answer to your question is, we will look to any place where we can.
We can get parking.
They do exist, but they do not uniformly exist.
So is that block that you're referring to, would that, could, could that develop as parking, surface parking in the short term? And then, long term, be land-banked for a more grand development? Is that possible?
Yes. I think a, I think a smart urban development director would steal that playbook in a heartbeat if he was responsible for planning services and probably would want to have lunch with you and take notes while you had such a really good idea. Absolutely. I'll, I'll tell you, even though we have added literally thousands of parking stalls downtown, you still, people say, "What are we going to do about parking?" It is an unending, it is a bottomless well of public demand. If we were to create 500 stalls, we'd all spend one week saying, "Thank God this is here." And then the eighth day would be, "Where's the new parking?" Yes. I think that would make a great deal of sense. But I need resources to do that.
Right.
Dave, before you walk away, I noticed this said that the development going forward would be reviewed by the Urban Design Committee?
No.
Did I see that?
No. And the reason is, absolutely none of the TIF project goes to the building. It doesn't go to them, it goes to us.
Mm-hmm.
There is no redevelopment need for the Urban Design Committee because that design isn't supported by any TIF dollars.
That goes back to the comment you made where the developers, in using the TIF funds, the city will be to do the public improvements.
There is, there is an exchange in that redevelopment agreement. The exchange is what we do is parking rights. But what we're not doing is using TIF dollars. And in fact, they're building according to right. They're building it to the design standards. They're, they're building to the height limitation. They're building, in essence, and, and architecture can tell you, when they say "building by right," it means they're not asking us for our permission. They own the property, and they're going to use their property consistent with what the law allows them to do. That's unlike a TIF project, where they ask us for permission to do certain things and for us to contribute to them and to their project, whether it's bearing utilities, or paying for sidewalks, or creating a variance that allows them, or an access point. All the kinds of things that we put in an agreement back and forth aren't present in this case because they're building to right on the Baker Hardware area.
Thank you. Do we have any additional testimony in support? I'm sorry. Dave, would you come back up? I just want to make sure I'm reading this right. So I'm on page 70 of our packet, and maybe I'm, I'm just misreading it. But on number eight, it says, "The source of funds will be tax increment financing. If this project receives, receives TIF assistance, the design details of the improvements will be reviewed by Urban Design."
In that case, I don't, I do not think that's accurate. And, and if that came from us, I would be surprised by that. We, when we, we know, and we tell developers, "If we do a TIF agreement and you're going to use money to, you know, build your building, that building will go to the Urban Design Project." That's what we tell them. This is unique because it isn't going to the building. Now, if there's a different, here comes Paul Barnes.
Come on up, Paul. Come up, Paul.
By the way, if anybody was going to put money on a wrestling match between Paul and myself, I'd put money on Paul, not me. I saw him at the Chocolate Lovers, and he is, he's a buff, kind of a money guy. But go ahead, Paul. Come on up here. Tell me the story.
Happy to hear about this.
We've got some high expectations now, Paul.
To address your question about item number eight, I think what we're saying here is, if any part of that building project receives TIF assistance, then that would be reviewed by the Urban Design Committee. But also, any other public improvements that receive TIF assistance, those would be reviewed as well, such as parking lot improvements or streetscapes. So although it doesn't sound like this project specifically is asking for the TIF assistance, and if it doesn't, then it wouldn't be reviewed.
Paul, I wonder if you, would be, if you say, "If we spend TIF dollars on a project, it goes to the Urban Design."
Okay.
Yeah.
That, because regardless of whether we're doing a building or not, I would like to see Urban Design take a look at this if, if we were using TIF money, so that I would, that makes sense.
And I think, for example, if we were to do a, a parking lot, and we were using TIF money, we ought to take it to the Urban Design Committee.
Great.
We would accept that principle completely.
Okay. And one other comment I would just ask you to consider, perhaps, would be, you know, when we did West Haymarket, because it was an area adjacent to kind of our Jewel Historic District, we actually had the combined Urban Design and HPC, Historic Preservation, work together to look at stuff. And as we're looking at developing this area, that might be something you guys could chat over with Ed and see if you think there would be some value in that. You know, that was in an area where we had no historic buildings. This, we have some really cool buildings, and it's adjacent to Historic District. So there might be some value in having that group combined again, just food for thought.
I was in an administration discussion just this morning in which Ed Zimmer raised that possibility.
Okay.
So it's under consideration.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions before we move to Danae?
Good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission. Danae Kalkowski. I'm appearing today on behalf of Trinitas Ventures. They're a national developer of student housing, and they're the ones proposing the Phase 1 project, which is the Collegiate Housing Project. So we're just appearing today in support of the South Haymarket Redevelopment Project Amendment to the redevelopment plan that would create this new project area and a finding that it's in conformance with the comprehensive plan. I think Dave's done a good job of explaining things overall, and our client is very excited to work on a project here in Lincoln. And I'd be happy to, you know, answer any questions that you might have.
I guess we don't have any.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any additional testimony in support of this application? Any testimony in opposition? Did we come up with any additional staff questions? And so there's no need for rebuttal, so we'll move to entertaining a motion. Move approval or move finding of conformance? It's Commissioner Beecham?
Second.
Commissioner Hope. Discussion. All right. Well, this looks like a great project. I'm glad that South Haymarket redevelopment is going forward, and I think this is a good project for the area. A little more collegiate housing, and hopefully we can get some more parking. I'm not a complainer. I'm just saying a little more is good. And so I'm going to support the application. Amy?
Beecham?
Yes.
Cornelia?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Fore?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Both?